...the council board order, please rise and place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No?
On the shelves on the other side of our state couldn't make it back. It's on the west side and he said he wouldn't be there.
Moving on.
You need a hand to pull that up this.
Yeah.
Approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
There are no additions or alterations that would like to approve the agenda?
Support it.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes for the December 8th meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes for the December 8th meeting?
Support.
Moved and supported.
As submitted, I should say.
As what?
As submitted.
Moved and supported to approve minutes for the December 8th meeting as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is the financial report.
We began the month with $158,461. We took in receipts of $24,969.17 and we made disbursements in the amount of $25,126.25, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $157,847.53.
I make a motion to approve the financial report as received.
Support.
Moved and supported to accept the financial report as received. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is correspondence. We have one thing here that we were sent. There's going to be a candidate forum for the 10th congressional candidates put on by the St. Clair County EBA. Unfortunately, it's the night of our February meeting, but the three candidates are Senator Pavlov, Paul Mitchell, and Alan Sandman. Okay, moving on. Simba Dolmanos. Old business, item A. Basically, because there's been a change in the state law, there's not much you can say at this time other than to say there's going to be a presidential primary election held on March 8th and everyone in Casco votes at the Casco Township Hall. That's about it for tonight on that. Moving on, item B. Ms. Smith court filing, papers haven't filed in Port York and they're going to serve her and there's a tentative show cause hearing for February 22nd. So we'll see what happens there. Moving on, new business, item A. In your packet, you have an invoice from C.R. Design for the work he did for us in regards to the hall. We've already approved the agreement, but the agreement also said that he would do all the drawings. He has submitted the drawings. Our building inspector says they're fine. I think they're very good, so I guess we would, I think we would need a motion to approve the drawings and approve payment of the invoice.
I so move.
Well, I need the motion stated.
I make motion to approve the drawings as presented and pay the bill submitted to us by C.R. Design.
Any amount of?
$3,400.
Thank you.
Okay, you supported that, Dan, right?
Yes.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the plans and authorize payment of $3,400 to complete our agreement with C.R. Design. Is there any discussion? I guess we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
And Colin?
Yes. I'll see Dan.
Okay, moving on, construction discussion. Our building inspector Roland Seuss is here. We talked a little bit, not as much as I'd like because he was sick and not on top of my game this week. Since Roland really can't do the inspecting on this job, so we've been kind of tossing around, you know, what it would take to have him basically be like a construction manager and overseer on it. And he was supposed to give it some more thought and come tonight and here he is. Roland?
Take it over.
Well, you know, I think that would work out well with the township, probably with me, but I think we still need to sit down and talk about what we're going to do for materials and the like as far as the print goes. Is everybody satisfied with the initial layout of everything?
Yes.
And what we're going to do with that? Nobody has any other ideas for materials that we're going to be using or?
I'm not qualified to talk about.
Well, you know, we haven't solidified the lighting selection yet and so that might come up a little bit and it seems like there was something else besides the lighting. Whether we would want to spend when we get some cost estimates, whether we'd want to go with a steel roof versus a shingle roof.
All right, if we did that, are we going to do the whole thing? Oh, this is already steel?
It's already steel.
Okay. Would it match?
I mean for the lighting?
No, he's talking about the roof.
The roof itself, yeah. I, I don't know, I have pros and cons about that.
Okay.
Steel roofing is a lot better, there's no doubt about it. Whether it's worth the money or not for right now, I don't know. I don't know what the future of the township's going to be or.
If we're going to be here or not.
Yeah, so.
Where are we going?
No, it's going to may put us on business.
We never know. I mean, you know, I would put on probably a good dimensional shingle personally and be done with it.
And that's good for about 10 years or longer?
Oh, it should be good for.
No, dimensional.
They tell you 25, but you should get 15 anyway.
Yeah, mine's guaranteed for 25.
Yeah.
Harder to last longer.
It's pro rata.
Right.
Because it's a higher pitch roof.
Yeah.
The higher pitch will last longer than the flat.
So. And I do like the steel roof, it's just whether or not it's worth the money for what we're going to be doing.
What's the differential?
We don't.
Well, it keeps changing. Now that some people tell you it's three to one.
Much more expensive, in other words.
Yeah.
It is.
And I'd rather spend that inside.
But we'll give you the options and cost estimates and go from there.
All right, is he going to do the cost estimates?
Well, I guess I'd kind of like to know what we're going to be doing for materials. I mean.
I mean, if he's running it, he should be able to, he knows much better than we how to order materials and what we need, am I right?
Well, yeah.
Or would the builder do that?
Most of the time the contractors can bid the amounts and then the player, you know,
But you could overlook it and see.
Project manager.
Right.
See the quality and discuss.
Structure manager.
You know, I can figure roof all day long, that's not a problem, so on and so forth. I would think the best way to do is have them supply material and labor. That way it gives you a guarantee for both.
Right.
Other than generally, a lot of times we would maybe get the rough material for building longer than that and go from there, but.
Okay.
But as to send it off for bid, I'd kind of like to make a list exactly what you think you'd want to have so we get it pretty close.
Yes.
To what the estimate could be, so everybody knows what their bid, you know, it's such a.
You got to have apples as apples, you got to know what you want.
Yeah, I mean, you can't have one guy did the tar paper on the roof and the next guy, you know.
And steel.
And I think the closer we get to that, the better it'll be, you know, so.
So, so actually we kind of need a kind of my, I have my list for the electrician and for the plumbing, exactly what we want.
At least within reason.
Right.
And that's, that would be another thing that we'd have to work on a little bit for cost overruns or whatever.
Right.
And with remodel work involved here, you're going to run into a little bit of that.
Right.
And you try to offset that as much as you can.
Right.
So. And like, I haven't been right up to the par in the last couple of weeks, I guess. I haven't gotten exactly what I wanted to bring to the board, but I didn't know exactly what we were looking for tonight either, so.
Right. Have you, have we, we need to decide how we're going to pay you and what we're going to pay you, right?
Yeah, I had a figure in mind, but I think I better look at that a little harder and see what we got and go from there. But I would just assume do it in a draw, maybe three draws or whatever they want would be if, if you agree to it, you know, as, by the hour, I mean, how do I figure by the hour? Half of my time would be at home on the phone at night or whatever, you know.
How do construction managers usually do it?
Well, they do it usually for a percentage or whatever.
Or?
Or a fee basis or something.
Right.
To the best of my knowledge, yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to get some input for that stuff, but I was busy last week and I felt like bad, but I drove diarrhea today.
Did you?
And they had a special meeting, so I did stick around. So I want to get some input out of their library, they just. And we'll come up, as you notice on the agenda, item K, we're going to ask the board to weigh the seal bid and go like price quotations.
Yeah.
And we'll have some parameters on that, on how much is, at what level, it could be just the supervisor and clerk approve it, and then at what level we meet board approval because we only meet once a month.
Right.
Yeah.
We can't be waiting.
You can't be dogging it out for that long, so.
Well, there's a lot of these things that are going to be pretty well cut and dried, you know.
The plans are pretty.
What's that?
The plans are pretty detailed.
Yeah, when you get into footings, that's pretty well cut and dried. We could nail somebody right now for that. And whatever we're going to use, I mean, that's pretty simple there. The rough is what it is. Demolition might have a couple of other things that are involved, but I mean, for those parts, it should be pretty close, you know, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, well, we're firing up along, once you get moving that. I did get price quotes from the IT folks for moving us up here, moving us back.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we're going to have to get some, something from the telephone because they're going to have to move the box.
Are you dealing with the telephone company itself or?
Well, most times if something breaks, they call that office in Port York, right?
Yeah, the guy who installed the system.
Is this frontier or?
No.
No, we got Comcast for our phones.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, and they won't move it, so it'd be Ken.
They won't move what?
Ken will have to move.
The guy who installed our system will come on.
I see.
And who's going to inspect?
Dave.
Dave Hilton.
I think our electrical and mechanical can inspect.
Right.
Because they're not employees.
Right.
So we can move ahead. I'm going to get some more information, I'll give it Roland and we'll keep everybody informed what's going on.
Yeah.
And would you like, plan on providing like a list of things that you will do as construction managers, like?
Absolutely.
Like a job description?
Yeah.
And where and when and so on.
You know, it would be good if I can come up with some kind of a timeframe for things that we do and try and stick right with that again. And it shouldn't be other than weather, it shouldn't be a problem with that either, you know.
Yeah, we just got to, it's going to be about the middle of March before we can do any serious doing anything as far as the old offices.
Ideally, if we could get in just before the frost laws, go on and get, get the footings in and get it rough while the frost laws are on, that really works out well, you know. Then you got the rough behind you after frost laws go off. Everything goes pretty mad after that for about a month, so.
That's going to be a short time between March and April and May. I've got a school.
Well, May is just a school, we can just have that.
But.
There's not going to be that many people.
Well, are, will we still be up here?
Yeah, I would assume.
All right, then we can't hold the election here. We'll have to hold it in the basement.
Well, for that part of the.
Where am I going to, where are they going to work? They can't work up here with my election.
It's March, I'll work from home.
It's May.
In May.
It's May, I'll work from home.
We'll be good in March.
Is that the first of May or what?
Yeah.
No, the eighth of May.
Well, it's still the first, it's the first week of my.
Whatever, no.
Well, maybe in such a.
Third, I think.
Third, yeah.
Or maybe such a situation that we could rough that out at Park and not demo the rest of it until right after the election. I don't know, it's all going to work out, you know.
We'll adapt and improvise.
Huh?
We'll adapt and improvise.
Yeah.
Or nobody comes to work on that day and I set it up for the election.
Yeah.
The offices are closed.
Well, I don't think it'll be.
We could do that because I'm combining, I'm going to combine my two, my two precincts.
Yeah. Well, in, in May is not any busy time.
A big, okay, so that's false, all right. Then that could, but we, the thing is that our stuff will be here. It can't be in the way.
Always feel some oversight.
This is somewhat, you know, that's what I'm looking, that's somewhat we kind of use as a.
Cost sheet.
Cost sheet and the schedule and the like. It's just a rough idea to start.
Was this done by your assistant?
Yeah, between her and the other assistants.
Assistant one and assistant two.
Thing one and thing two. This is good, don't you think?
It's a list of stuff, whatever is applicable.
Yeah.
It's for housing, but I mean, you know, that's.
Still.
Yeah.
They can be used, we can tweak it where we need.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so when you get a chance, I don't know if I'm coming in tomorrow or not.
Uh, yeah, I'm going to be in the house yet tomorrow probably too, so I can work on some of this stuff.
But I did, I did have something for you, but I was gone this morning then. There's really, there's no benefit to us buying materials.
No.
No, you can't.
No.
You can't.
You know, so.
All right. All right, so at our next meeting, we'll decide how much we're going to pay him?
Yeah, he'll have a laid out.
Okay.
So he knows what it's going to cost and he can start getting stuff done. You know, you were talking about leads and that, that they couldn't lead out of the municipality and that, but when it comes to getting the trades in here, if they're supplying the material, I do believe we should have some kind of a release form from their suppliers, whoever, like the drywall board or lumberjack or, you know, whoever you might be getting it from, Dylan Upton or whatever.
A waiver?
What's that?
A waiver?
Yeah, waiver.
Well, I talked to the insurance guy who's retiring, he's gone now, and he kind of told me what he felt we should have from them and.
Have they got a different kind of form that we could use?
Well, it's what the insurance is that they have to cover. And he said that'll take care of the waiver lien and everything.
Does the form we just give to the contractor?
No, when you put the bid out, you have to tell them that's the kind of bond you're going to have, or insurance form you're going to have to bring us.
Oh, you're going to make them have cash bond or?
No, it's not a, well, the bond would be the same as any other building, but this is their insurance policy.
Oh.
And he said, so he told me what to get and make sure they, they have to bring you something verifying that the premium was paid through the way through the job.
But I don't know, I kind of go with Roland of getting a statement that they're not going to have any leads because even if they can't legally, they can, it happened, it happened at the university where the contractor put all kinds of leads and then they had to go to court to, you know, get it all like that, which was costly for the university even though they won.
Well.
So you might as well get ahead of that, I think.
Yeah.
Because who's selling it, doesn't know.
Well, most jobs you get a waiver of lien and.
You have to get also.
When you get it, then you release the payment.
But with.
But there's no means, we don't want any means for materials.
They can't.
But like.
I know, but they, but everybody doesn't know that and sometimes it can happen and then you have to fight, you know.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, for lack of terminology, this is what I'm saying, like especially from the suppliers.
It also is a notice to them, you know, where we're really at with this and that, there's no confusion either.
Well, if they do a, they're going to say they want a waiver of lien, yes.
What's that? You're not going to go through title work or anything on this, are you?
On this?
Yeah, not just for the, that's kind of what we do for, for title work, where you run it through a title company and so on and so forth.
Do we have to?
No, we did the survey and our captain did the work. I don't think we have a problem with the title.
No, I mean for what we're doing, you know, as far as, there's no mortgage or anything on this, right? This is all, because we wouldn't need that, other than the fact that when it's done, it would show zero costs and everything was paid, puts it in the paperwork. So.
So we'll be working on it.
Those are my thoughts on it, whatever.
Okay.
Sounds like a place to start.
Then when you feel better, we'll start having meetings.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work on that and I'll go through the trades, what we're going to probably be using and then we decide what kind of materials you're going to use and where you're going to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
That's it?
Sounds good.
Okay, good.
And you agree with K on the agenda that we should waive the seal bids?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just checking while you're here in case you leave. Okay, moving on, item C, resolution 2016-01, annual meeting and public hearing. And it is set, annual meeting and budget hearing will be held March 1st, 2016 at 7:00 PM and it is a resolution to do that.
We'll have to have Brenda retype this.
Yeah.
And Joe was not here, but I make a motion to approve.
Adopt. You're adopting it.
Okay. Make motion to adopt annual meeting, public hearing 2016-17 budget hearing, which is resolution 2016-01.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve resolution 2016-01 for the annual meeting and budget hearing. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item B, resolution 2016-02, rezoning parcel 7412-31, 104100, which is 15 acres on county line. I kind of gave you everything I had in regards to this. Planner recommended it, the planning commission recommended it, the county planning recommended it, and it would be a good way to finally wrap that parcel up that they were fighting for 35 years over. It's never going to be farmland, it's either office service or commercial. So I think that's the best way to go.
Now, in the resolution, do you need to have some of the contingencies on it?
What contingencies?
The continuing bar on sex-oriented businesses and projects.
No, that's already been settled in court.
That's, okay, so that goes with the land as it is?
Right. So all we're doing is rezoning it from agricultural to B2. It had been B2 under the court consent guideline, but it had all these limitations and stuff, so we got rid of that and went to just a plain rezoning. And the owner can do whatever is allowed in B2.
Make a motion to adopt Casco Township ordinance 3091, rezoning a parcel from agricultural to B2 general business. Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve or?
Adopt.
Adapt. I knew she was going to adapt, didn't even get out my mouth. Adapt resolution 2016-02, rezoning of the parcel so indicated. Roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colin?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Item E. As we do every January, we allocate funds to the road commission for emergency road repairs for the winter and spring. On the table is a copy of the budget amendment that will be required to do that. So, do we have any questions or do we have a motion? It's basically $20,000, we just put it in the account so if something comes up, they do not have to have an approved work order from the township in order to fix a bad spot that we incurred.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments for 2015, 2016 out of the general fund for road millage, $20,000 for emergency repairs.
Is it general fund or?
General fund is the, it's all in one, it's in the contingent.
So general fund is.
So that's that pre-.
Yeah, that's.
Anybody support that?
I'll support it.
Moved and supported to transfer $20,000 to the road commission fund for emergency repairs in the winter and spring. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Colleen?
Yes.
Bill?
Aye.
Pat, yes. And Dan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. In order to comply with the timelines required, you'll see in your packet under F, it is the applications for the special land use and the site plan review for the township hall. There's been no action taken, but we had to have it in 15 days before the planning commission meeting, so it went in, but there's never been a formal approval of doing this. I laid out in the update, I think, that we haven't come to a cost yet because I'm still hoping the planner's going to give us a discount because it's for the township, but it could be as much as $700 and we should have more approval. Basically, I'm asking you to get more approval for the site plan, special land use process for the Casco Township Hall.
I move that we approve the process, site approval process for the township hall.
I'll support that.
Okay, moved and supported. Are we good with the minutes thing?
Linda?
Did you say Linda or?
I said Linda.
What do you mean the minutes thing?
Well, the motion.
Probably should say for the renovation and extension of the township hall.
I've just got that he approved, that he made a motion to approve the special land use process for the.
That's all you want.
Yeah.
Site plan approval.
Are you going to approve whatever the fees are going to be up to a certain dollar amount or are you going to do that?
He said $700, didn't he?
It could be. We don't know.
So we'll wait till you know.
Well, you're approving the process, it's going to cost what it's going to cost.
Right.
It's going to be, we charge everybody the same, but hopefully we'll get a discount. Okay, moved and supported. Is there any discussion? I guess we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Dan?
Yes.
Pat, yes. Bill?
Aye.
And Colin, yes.
Okay, item G. After I put in the update about the road commission meeting, two days later, we got the letter. I was up there today and I told them to put us down for the 3:30 to 5, whatever it is, 3 to 5, 3:30 to 5:30. So if you want to change it, I can still call and change it, but while I was there, because that was the one we went to last year. So I don't know who's all going. And also, when I get, when we get there, they're going to ask about the road tour. Now, this is always a touchy thing. I'm assuming nobody's super excited about the road tour.
You assume correctly.
You assume correctly.
Okay. You don't have a problem with the 3:30 to 5:30, if you decide you don't?
If I decide to go, that time slot is fine.
Okay, Patty?
Same here. Friday side.
Okay, so we're good there.
Yeah.
Okay, item A. As I put in the update, we're renting the park property for farming. And when we got into that originally, I called Farm Services and they told me it was all good to go. And then when Mr. Campo went up to register the planning, they said he could only register 46 acres unless he had a wetland determination. So through no fault of his own, he's deprived from working four acres. And until he gets that determination. So that breaks down to 8%. So. I think it would be reasonable on our part to give him a rebate for the rent and, what was it, $280, which is 8% of his rent.
So move. Support.
Moved and supported. Give a rebate to the park property rent to Mr. Campo for $280. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Colleen.
Yes.
Bill.
Aye.
Pat, yes. And Dan.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, item I. It's the St. Clair County MTA annual dinner and also a bill for the dues. The dues.
Where?
Aye. Send it paid back.
Oh, I see.
The dues are $25. The dinner is $30 ahead. And the dinner is February 18th. So we would need approval for the dues and to cover the reimbursement of anyone that wants to go. Joe said he's going.
Who is it being told?
Was to be the.
It used to be Four Lakes.
Oh, it's still at Four Lakes?
Just got a different name.
Okay.
So we would need a motion to that effect.
I make a motion to, to approve for anybody wishing to attend the dinner and meeting and pay their costs and to also pay for the dues. How much are the dues?
$25.
$25.
Okay.
Support.
Moved and supported. authorized reimbursement of $30 a person for anyone attending the MTA dinner.
Reimbursement? Okay. Okay, reimbursement, all right.
Yep. And also to pay our dues, which are $25 per year. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries. Okay, moving on, item J, record disposal.
Do we really have a ton down there?
Oh, hon, you don't even know.
There's a lot. And a lot of them can go.
Right.
Uh, I'm pricing around, we have a couple of options. It's much cheaper to have them come and get a ton at once, but I wanna make sure we don't discard anything good. So the other option is they can bring out a container and come out every month, pick it up and give you an empty one. So I'm looking at, I was supposed to go look at a container today, but Ira had a meeting and we were locked up. So I gotta go to Lennox and look at theirs. And maybe we can get two containers for almost the same price as one, because the cost is always the transportation to come and get it. So.
How big are the containers?
Well, the one in Lennox, you see these green garbage things with the wheels?
Yeah.
That's theirs.
Three or four yards?
Well, no, just a small one.
Like a garbage?
Like a garbage can with wheels.
I could fill one of those.
And Ira's has got a box that supposedly holds 60 pounds. So I think Lennox is more than that. So I gotta compare prices and stuff and, uh, what we need is start getting rid of some of that stuff that's killing us. We do have, uh, we did get a copy of all the retention schedules. And there are some areas that you don't have to keep anything over seven years, and we've got them for 35 years.
Right.
But I wanna go through them a little bit and make sure if there's something you want to keep.
Right.
So I guess all I'm asking if there's a problem or if you want a motion, uh, you can put a limit of $500 on it. The monthly fee for the place in Ira is $30 a month, which would be 360 a year. Lennox is like $48 every two months for three containers, which sounds better, but I didn't get all the details yet. So either way, it would be under $500 for a year. So.
I make a motion that we look into the record disposal and for it to not cost more than $500 a year. Support.
Moved and supported.
I'm not sure I quite follow this. This one is, the one that you're noting in your update is $30 for up to 30 pounds, up to 60 pounds at one time.
Right.
That's any, that's gonna cost a lot for a ton, no?
Yeah, or it's only 22 cents a pound if they come out and get a ton, you know, a bunch. But you gotta have room to go through a bunch and have it where they can get at it with a handcart. That's the downside. Okay? And I'm not saying which one we're going with, but I'm hopeful that we could probably get more than one box for very little extra money, because they're coming out here with a truck anyway. 'Cause it's all transportation fee is what it is. And they're, they're insured, they're bonded, they work for the IRS, the one I talked to. And, uh, so we gotta.
Do we have any very sensitive stuff down there?
It's only sensitive in the, the way the state looks at it.
Right.
You mean that we have to keep certain things, but there's not any confidential kinds of.
No.
No, but even when it's outdated, things like ballots and stuff, you can't just throw them in the garden.
No.
Okay. And old treasure records and stuff like that. So. I think it's a good way to start.
All right, we have a support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve looking into the record disposal. Not to exceed $500 a year. Now, the place I talked to, uh, it's not a contract. Give them 30 days' notice or nothing.
Oh, good.
Now, the other place I don't know. So I like that. Okay. Any discussion? I will just call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries. Okay, moving on, item K, waiver of seal, competitive bidding. As I kinda put in the update, back in the 90s, the state, they always do pass the goofy law that said you have to have sealed bids. And if the township didn't pass an ordinance to that in fact of some type, they were gonna penalize you. So every township in the state passed this written policy. Well, then three years later, the state did away with it. They said, you don't have to have sealed bids. Well, we've never changed it. And hopefully, we're gonna update it with something better, but until then, if you look at the very last, I think it's the last one on the last page, says the board deserves the right to waive, uh, bidding requirements. So I'd just like to go right away for this.
All right, so all we need is a motion.
Yep.
And I make a motion to waive, um, any sealed competitive bidding for, for our additions, addition on our township. Support.
Moved and supported to waive the sealed competitive bidding policy.
Thank you.
And basically, it's mostly a timeline thing, because we only meet once a month. I mean, if you're gonna go through the whole rhythm and roll of a sealed bid and you open them up and there's a snag and the board, you know, I don't wanna have three special meetings every month. So with the price quotation, if there's a snag, it could be corrected, even if it's coming to the board for approval.
And you'll have reasonable requirements for the quotes that you're gonna get in terms of qualifications to the job and.
Right.
Not collusion, stuff like that.
Yep. Did we vote on this?
No.
Okay.
We got a support now.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, motion carries. Next item is handling bills.
Are there any questions on the bills? If there are no questions on the bills, I'll make a motion that the bills be paid. I'll support that.
Moved and supported to pay the bills, is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dan.
Yes.
Patty, yes. Bill.
Aye.
And Colleen.
Yes.
Okay, citizens' comments.
Like I said, eh.
Everybody else, everybody here?
Eh. Actually, I would like to put out there that we are looking for more election inspectors. If you would like to be one, call the office and we'll send you an application to fill out. There is schooling you would have to go to, it's like a two-hour thing, you get paid for it. We have a lot of fun, lot of fun running our elections here. That's all I have to say.
Lot of fun?
Yeah, we do have a lot of fun.
Okay. We're up to adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn. Support.
Moved and supported to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.
Hope you feel better.